My little gavel, home gavel. I'd like to welcome you all to the Milton School Committee meeting via remote access for April 1st, 2020. I'm officially calling the meeting to order. And the first, the first act that I'm going to say is ask for approval of the April 1st, 2020 agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, this is Elaine.
Yes.
I'd like to delete the chairs report because there are no vendor warrants and there's no update. We will have an update the next time we meet.
The finance subcommittee report, not chairs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries. All right, so we're gonna strike that.
Finance subcommittee, yes.
That's good. Okay. Before we proceed, I just wanna, for the streaming public, viewing slash streaming public, I just want to FYI that we are still operating under the revised open meeting law. The emergency order from Baker &amp; Polito that was issued March 11th, I'm not gonna read it, but I'm just going to just FYI that we're still working under that. And the next thing I just want to get out of the way is that some do's and don'ts. When, when we're working here, when you are not speaking, if everyone can mute their microphone so that we don't get some time of that echo or that feedback. And when the time comes, just like we did last time, yep, Ada?
Yeah, there, there was a parent from Glover School, Patty Facy, who was on the other call that we all, Betty and myself and Mike Lynch were on. And she doesn't appear to be on this call now. And I just wanna be sure that we can get the information to her.
Ada, hi. Ada, I'll reach out to her directly. It's Karen. And make sure, I'll make sure she can get on. I'll, I'll do it right now. Yep.
That's super. Thank you, Ada. That's great.
Sorry to bother you.
No, 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 it's great. Um, hold on, I just wanna go back to regular. Sorry.
There she is.
Here she is, Ada.
Hi, Patty.
I'm sorry, I'm just clearing out of mine. There we go. Thank you. So, uh, so as we proceed through the meeting, after each bullet in the agenda, if anybody, if any member of the school committee wants to speak to it or has questions, just because we have so many people on the call, I will just reference each member. And then you can speak or have questions. And then after I go through the school committee members, if there's anybody else, says, anyone else wanna make final comments or has final questions? Just identify you so that we know who it is. So we say, this is Mary McCarthy from Glover, or Principal McDavid from Glover, just so for the minutes, cause it's an open meeting. And Maureen Kennedy, who takes the minutes for our meeting, can accurately understand what's happening, who's speaking, et cetera, et cetera. Also, for anything we have to vote on, which I actually don't think we have to vote on anything tonight, maybe the minutes, the only thing we will have to vote on, the March, the March 26 minutes. I'll officially do a roll call vote because we are virtual. And again, so we're clear and concise on everyone's answer to that. Does that make sense to everybody? Yeah? Okay, with further ado, are there any citizens speak? Is there anyone from the viewing Milton public that is on and would like to speak? Citizens speak? Okay, then we're off to the superintendent's report. There we go.
First, we'd like to welcome the Glover Site Council and turn it over to Principal McDavid to make introductions and take it away.
Okay, so I just said to Superintendent Gormly and Assistant Superintendents Pavlicek and Spalding that this is very weird and very wonky and very strange, but we're gonna get through it and we're gonna get through it together. And as, as much as I get nervous about things like this, I love being in front of you guys to share all the great things we do at Glover and to, to thank you for, for the hard work that you do. So I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but I do just want to publicly recognize the leadership team and the school committee for their unbelievable work and effort over this unprecedented time. We could not be led with a stronger, steadier hand than Mary Gormly's hand. And I'm not saying that to be a kiss up. I'm saying that because it's true. And I am very grateful. And on behalf of all of Glover, I want to publicly thank the school committee and the leadership team for, for all that you have done. And thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I made a joke that Glover rolls deep, but we do. We're, we're pretty tight at Glover. And so when I threw this out there, I was hoping maybe one or two would be willing to join me. And I have almost every single one of our amazing site council on this meeting call, whatever you wanna call it. So I'm gonna share my screen so that I can pull up our, um, our presentation that we've worked hard to put together for you. And I hate to be redundant, but can everybody see my screen? I can't see you, so I'm hoping that you can. Yes. So this is our presentation and I wanna introduce everyone virtually who is here. I'm joined by Assistant Principal Sarah McNeil, first grade teacher Mary McCarthy, second grade teacher Lauren Vanacore, third grade teacher Sarah Hammond, and where can't be with us tonight, but has contributed a great deal to our site council, and Nicole Grant Heel, fourth grade teacher, who is also a member of our diversity committee. And she serves as a very powerful bridge between the site council and the diversity committee because our third goal, moving into our new school improvement plan, is around diversity and inclusion. I'm also joined by amazing parents, Kevin Fleming, parent of two girls at Glover, Patty Facy, a parent of one girl at Glover, and Kelly Sia, parent of three amazing children. And I am not joined by Dr. Mary Ann Dackack. And I do just have to also publicly thank her because I'm not joined by her because she is currently working the night shift on the COVID-19 floor at a Boston hospital. And so I just wanna publicly thank Dr. Dackack and all of the other doctors and nurses who are out there saving lives so that we can do what we do. So that is who is with me. And a little bit about Glover. So we have 621 students currently in kindergarten through fifth grade. We also proudly house the STEP program, which is a social emotional therapeutic program for children who have either social emotional or behavioral health needs. And we have co-taught classrooms, a little different than last year. We have co-taught classrooms in grades one through five. We traditionally have had kindergarten through fifth grade. We start in first grade now. And our focus is really on students with language-based learning disabilities. So, so that's a really exciting shift that we've had over the course of this year to sort of specialize our co-taught classrooms a bit. This chart will tell you who, who we are in the numbers. And you can see our, our French classes are quite full. And our English classes are, are nice sizes in the, in the lower grades. And we get bigger as we get older, but that's okay. We can handle it. So this is just our mission statement. And of course, that we, we promote the Milton Public Schools' core values. And this is who we are. And, and I don't say that lightly. We've talked a lot as a site council about branding and about the fact that we have, we've, we've pretty much branded the idea of what is a Glover kid. And you can ask any kid kindergarten through fifth grade, who, what it means to be a Glover kid. And they're going to tell you Glover kids are safe, responsible, respectful, and kind. And this is our PBIS initiative, but it's so much more than that. It's who we are. And whether we're in school or we're not in school, they are showing me and their teachers and their families that they're Glover kids all day, every day. So it's really exciting. I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Principal Curriculum Coordinator Sarah McNeil, who is going to talk to us briefly about our 2017-2020 school improvement plan. And as you can see, that 2020 means that we are nearing the, the end of that plan. So we are, in this presentation, going to give you a little sneak peek into what our 20 to 23 plan might look like. We have done extensive surveying of all stakeholders. And we feel like we've got a really good idea of where we're going in the next three years. But we wanted to take a moment to reflect back on where we've been. So Assistant Principal McNeil?
Yes, hello. Do I, I don't need to share my screen, right? You all can still see Karen's? Okay, great, awesome. I just, again, wanna echo Karen and just say thank you to our leadership. And also thank you to your, to the school committee for all your support. It's been rocky times right now, but we're, you know, we're all sticking with it together and we're, we're moving forward. So I'm happy to share this really great news with everyone tonight. So our first goal around academic achievement was for teachers to use the data from their classrooms and assessments to really get our students moving to their highest potential. We've been working together with assessment plans, with the teachers, and really honing in on forming small groups and really looking at specific data and how to best support our students, not only with remediation, but also to push them further in sort of extension activities as well. So as you can see from our MCAST scores, we've been spending a lot of time in common planning meetings with me weekly, also during our staff meetings and our professional development done by the district. We've been really using that data to support our students all through kindergarten, all the way through grade five. These results of our MCAST this past year, the 2018, 2019 in this chart, this is the reflection of the work that we're doing K to V. So although it does only give us grades three, four, and five, this is a reflection of the work that the entire school is doing. So you'll notice that the results from the collective effort of the Glover staff, there may be a few dips here and there, one including the third grade math there, you'll notice. We have used this data sort of as a global sense and honing in on some ideas and some places that we might need to put a little work. So after we got this data, we mobilized our math specialists. And we said, oh, there was a small dip in our grade three math. And so we mobilized the math specialists. And everyone came together with our grade three team to talk about what we could do and how we could use this data to inform our instruction. And after meeting with the third grade team and putting them into a coaching cycle, we also tackled our fourth grade team in thinking that that cohort of students is now in fourth grade and what do they need and what do they miss? So we did that. And we also looked backwards to second grade to think about foundations. What are the students in second grade getting or maybe missing that they need for third grade? So we're constantly using this data. And you'll notice Glover roughly has about 100 students in each third, fourth, and fifth. So these numbers represent almost the number of students that are achieving, meeting, or exceeding in the MCAST. So out of 100 students, 85 of them are meeting or exceeding, which is pretty phenomenal. So we're really proud of this data and we're proud of the work that goes behind it. And so I'm gonna kick it over to Patty Facy, who is a Glover parent. And she's gonna share a little bit more about how our Glover children learn best together and how we boost them in their activities. Patty, are you there? Oh. So I'll just keep going. I don't know if we lost her.
One thing, I did see that Patty joined. So Patty, just double check, you might be muted. So just double check if you have to unmute your mic, hon. That might be it.
Unmute. There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Here we go. So you see some slides in front of you on the screen? So Glover teachers and students engage in a lot of collaborative and cooperative enrichment activities inside and outside of the classroom, which help the students learn to think critically and develop skills for success, both inside and outside of school. And I was fortunate, I have a daughter who's in fourth grade in the co-taught class. And I was fortunate to come in a few months ago and work with the day for celebrating our differences. And it was an amazing experience. And the kids all had so much fun just learning how other people learn and how people, other people walk and move and get through, get through life. It was really amazing. So you can see in some of these slides, you know, the kids just having fun doing all of those activities. And you can see the smiling faces and realize that they're all really proud to be Glover kids. So.
I just have to chime in, it's Karen, I just have to chime in. This picture in the middle here is Sarah Witten and Sarah Witten's father. And so when I tell you that we are a family at Glover, we are legitimately a family. So this is our sensory path that she and her father designed and implemented and installed. And it is magic. If you haven't seen kids hopping down this path at Glover School, come see it when we ever are able to see it again. Cause it is, it is magical. But that is her father in the middle there. And that is, that is the way, that is the way we roll at Glover. So Patty, Patty also mentioned, you know, the Glover staff here. And I would be remiss if I didn't share that these are some of the most dedicated educators I've ever met in my life. So we are Glover kids.
Definitely.
Lauren?
Goal number two.
Hi, Lauren Vanacore here, second grade co-taught teacher. And I'm really proud to be able to participate in this presentation because I'm so proud of all the amazing work that happens at Glover. Our second goal was all about school climate and culture. And all the different ways that we foster a positive school climate and culture, where all students feel welcomed and supported and respected and appreciated. And it focuses not only on the work that we do as staff to kind of create this culture and to make these experiences for the students, but also the different ways that we help the students to be empowered to help contribute to and even drive the creation of this culture. So Karen touched earlier on the PBIS framework that we use at our school. And I know we use across the district. Karen mentioned the idea of being a Glover kid. And this is an identity that every single Glover kid has truly bought into. They all know that they are safe and kind and respectful and responsible when they're at Glover School. And we've done a tremendous amount of front-loading as a staff on teaching really explicitly all the students, not just what's expected of them in the classroom, but what does it look like to be a Glover kid when you're on the playground? What does it sound like to be a Glover kid when you're in the hallway? Even what does it look like to be a Glover kid when you're on the school bus riding home at the end of the day? So these are tenets that we hope that the children take, not just when they're at Glover School, but even beyond into their lives outside of Glover School. And every single staff member at our school has a common language that they use around what's expected of students and how they are expected to be respectful and safe and kind and responsible. And I missed one in there. Respectful? Did I say that twice? So they have, all staff members have the same common language. And one way that we recognize our students is anytime that they are copying Glover kids, they can be awarded a duck foot. And it's just a little piece of paper with a little duck foot drawn on it. And we write the kids' names on it and they go to put it on the pond. And Karen did not stage the photo of the pond that's in the presentation. That is what Glover Pond looks like all the time. We have to constantly take them down, send the kids home with their duck feet to show off to their families because the pond is constantly filling up because the kids have really bought in to the PBIS Glover Kid Initiative. And they're so proud of all the work that they do and we're really proud of them. And every Friday morning, Sarah McNeil pulls a few names off the pond and she recognizes them on the loudspeaker during the announcements. And so you can see that kids who get called down to the office on Friday, they get a medal that they wear all day so that people can stop them in the hallway and ask them, oh, what did you do to be a Glover kid? So they were constantly reinforcing the ways that they're respectful and responsible and kind and safe. And Karen, you can jump in, cause I don't know this game in the top corner, but it's so sweet.
One of our, our goals tonight for the listening or viewing public and for the school committee and the leadership team is to leave you with a few stories that we hope make you smile because we need smiles more than ever. So this picture up in the far right corner, I hope you can see it. This is a fourth grade student in our co-taught, who was, it was pajama day, by the way. So forgive the outfit. But he was recognized for something really awesome on a Friday. He got a medal. He was recognized over the loudspeaker as being a Glover kid. His mother happens to work in our kitchen. And this is the moment when she realized that her son had been recognized as a Glover kid. And we, it, it makes us all smile, so we hope it makes you smile too.
And can I just say, this is Sarah McNeil again. Karen, can you go back? I had to make a virtual pond now that we no longer are at Glover on Fridays. So I made a padlet of a virtual Glover kid pond where parents can go on and actually nominate their children from home. And so that way we keep the routine of the Glover ponds. We have a virtual Glover pond while we are not at Glover. And it doesn't look this built yet, so I'm hoping this will be.
Lauren, did you have anything to say about this slide?
Yeah, way back in September, the beginning of the year, we helped to lay the foundation of being a kind and inclusive school by participating with, start with Hello Week. And so this was a week where all the kids started off by making name tags that had little pictures of words that kind of talked about some of their interests. And the whole goal of the week was to get kids to foster and create new relationships with their classmates and really create that climate of Glover being a place where everyone is welcome and everyone is included and everyone's respected.
Thank you, Lauren.
Another important initiative at our school is the student leadership team. And these teams are made up of fourth and fifth graders who go through an application process in the fall. And they join student leadership teams that are mentored by teachers who volunteer to run them. And there are teams that run the gamut of different interests. So there's the kindness squad, there's the green team, there are the PE assistants. But it's all different avenues that our fourth and fifth graders have where they can be leaders in the school and help to be some of that driving force that helps to create our kind and inclusive and respectful climate that we have at Glover School.
Just to shout out, 20 teachers who volunteer their own time for teams and over 150 fourth and fifth graders who participate. So it's pretty cool. And goal three?
Hi, I'm Nicole Grant Heel here. I'm from first grade at Glover School. And I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to tell you a little bit more about what the Glover Diversity Committee is doing this year. So when I think about family and community engagement and a positive, welcoming, inclusive school culture, I think of the diversity committee. And I've been on that committee, excuse me, since I was a first year teacher at Glover. And I've seen that committee grow with parent participation and the, the programs that they bring to the committee. It's, it's so amazing to see. So tonight I just wanna talk a little bit more about four programs that we are starting or in the middle of doing or hoping to start in the next couple of months if school opens up again. The first is diversity and the Glover Diverse Reads Family Book Club. And this is a club that's open to fourth and fifth graders. And I believe we have a participation rate of 40 to 50%. And this is a parent-run, volunteer-before-school club. And what this club involves is that the students participate in reading books of diverse content and also complete activities that are related to the book. And the really great thing about this program is that the students get to either meet the authors one-on-one or face-to-face. They got to meet the author of The Firefly Code. I've been practicing that word for two days. I keep messing, mixing up the words, but. The Firefly Code. And they also got to Skype with the author of the season of Sticks Malone. They did have a couple of Skypes on, on, on deck, I guess you can say, for the upcoming months. But because of school closing, I'm not quite sure what's going to happen there. But I thought it was really amazing that they got to have the, they got to have a Skype or they're going to have a Skype with the very popular Tristan Strong author. So I think that's great. Another thing that they do, which I wanted to say too, the diversity committee is really great at this year, welcoming new families and establishing connections. So one of the other programs I wanna talk about is community dinners. So in the fall, at a committee member's house, they had a potluck meal where they just again established those connections and welcomed new families to, to share a meal with them and just to establish that affinity. There's a couple more programs that I wanna talk about that are brand new this year. One, it was slated for the end of April. And it is the Stories of Race in Milton Public Schools: Listening as Allyship. And it's a unique program that one of the parents brought to our attention. And it really recognizes that the people of color in Milton Public Schools might have a different experience. So what they could do is just anonymously record that experience, either through audio or through written, and just to be heard. And then we are challenged as a listener to think about, okay, what are their experiences? And just address any issues that, that might come up from that. And lastly, a brand new, just based on our last meeting, a brand new parent-initiated program or project is what we call Conversations of Color. And what that is, is where students and parents get to just, just come together together for affinity and again, establishing that connection. And the students will gather in one area and the parents will gather in another. And the students will participate in an activity that is parent-initiated or I should say really peer-initiated. So fifth graders will come and help them, they might read a book and make slime. And then some friends from peers can come back and initiate and that, facilitate that project too. And then the parents will just gather together just to ask questions of each other and engage in conversation and just have a safe place to share. And then what happens from that is that any issues that might come up, come up, we'll bring it to Karen to make any sort of changes. So those are a few of the projects that I want to outline tonight. So once again, thank you for letting me present all the wonderful things that the diversity committee is doing.
And we have other community events. I believe Kevin Fleming is gonna share about these.
All right, thank you. So first off, Glover is just not just a building or school. We are a community. And right now, you know, looking at these pictures here virtually, they kind of hit home even more. Some of the events that kind of stand out are, you know, after-school or before-school programs, such as, you know, our landen walk, our turkey trot, our, you know, walk or bike to school days. But also, we've done a lot to try to increase the classroom participation. Some things that we put together are, you know, outdoor classrooms, open gym, digital citizenship, RAN, MTA. But we're also trying to increase those numbers as well. And we kind of did another survey, as you see, there's a lot of surveys. So we asked and reached out to some of the parents and see what some of those barriers were from holding them back from either participating, you know, volunteering during school or after-school or attending these events. And as we found out, a lot of it, you know, as you can see here, is like work commitment, childcare. And obviously, we can't really help with the work commitment, but the childcare, we put, we're trying to put place, things in place to try to combat that by seeing if we can do some problem solving and see if we can do some children activities during these events. Or maybe like a movie night, things like that. But we've taken this information and we are gonna put things in place to try to overcome this. And then the next slide, I believe, is Glover Gives. So this one actually hits home as well. My wife and I, about four or five years ago, we're kind of trying to get our kids involved in charities. I think I hit up a lot of the schools and a lot of people on this to put some boxes and donation boxes. And now every time I go into the school, I see another charity event. So not only are we trying to help koalas, we also, it hits home when we have our own students affected by this. So I can see like, you know, from the pictures, we've done food and can drives. We've also raised, our children have raised money for cancer and so forth. But you know, this is, you know, that isn't taught in the classroom, but is teaching our kids to be better human beings, especially this, around this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. So I hope that those pictures made you smile. I hope that seeing faces brought a smile to your face. I wanna shift gears a little bit and shift us into, and I'm just going to, sorry, I, I hope this doesn't mess things up. But I'm not able to see you guys, which is, which is throwing me off a little bit. But okay, so I'm okay. All right. So I'm just gonna shift gears now and, and take a, oh no, I'm so sorry. Here we go. You just get to see their beautiful faces again. There they are, our beautiful Glover kids. So I wanna shift gears and, and talk to you a little bit about where we're going. And we have three goals to move us forward. We love our academic achievement goal. And our, we feel very strongly about maintaining and continuing and developing our social emotional learning goal, which is our second goal, with an increased behavioral health focus. So before we were closed, we were able to, I think we might've been the only school that got it in. We were able to participate in the Safe and Supportive Schools Self-Assessment put out by Desi and really looking at our behavioral health structures and how we're supporting the needs of students, both academically and socially, emotionally. and how we're supporting the needs of students, both academically and socially, emotionally and behaviorally. So, um, that certainly is a central tenet of ours that we need to, uh, continue to work through. And our third goal, uh, had been a, a family engagement goal. And it is sort of, um, as you heard from Nicole, uh, morphing a little bit into more of a diversity and inclusion goal. So thanks to our amazing Kelly Sia, one of our parent representatives on the Site Council. She has this, this great brain and this great way of thinking about things. So she has color-coded for us moving forward. So our goal one, anything that sort of is a related to academic achievement and, and classroom, uh, experience, uh, would be in blue. Um, anything related to behavioral health, social emotional, school culture, school climate, anything like that is, is pink, coded pink. Um, and then our, our newly sort of, uh, transformed Goal Three, which is a diversity and inclusion goal, um, will be coded in yellow. So I just want you to sort of have that map in your head because it'll help you kind of parse apart, um, what we're thinking. Um, so four years ago, we administered a set of surveys to family, students and staff. And at that time I had just come on board. Um, and I really wanted to learn and I wanted to know where, where people were and, and, and what, what we could be doing better. Um, and we learned a lot from those surveys and we changed a lot and we did a lot. And, um, Glover is, I, I, I believe better for it and better for our efforts. And, um, it was exciting to administer surveys again. Um, we, we took the surveys that we had initially, um, but we revised them. We brought them to the Diversity Committee and spent some time working with the Diversity Committee to make sure that they really reflected a, um, an inclusive, um, equity lens. So a lot of our questions actually took more of an, of an equity, uh, lens than they had, um, four years ago. Uh, we administered them thankfully before all this went down because we were able to get a really good sampling from, um, all of our students participated, all 621. Um, 30-something staff participated and we had 139 families participate. So we do feel like it's a really good representation of, um, how, how families, students and staff are feeling. Um, so we're going to briefly just share with you, uh, our glows and our grows, um, because we're doing well, but we can always get better and we can always improve. And I'm always eager to know what we can, we can do to make the experience better for all stakeholders. Um, so again, that blue is going to be academic achievement. The pink will be social emotional and the, the yellow will be, um, informing our, our formation of a diversity and inclusion goal. I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Sia because this is her, her brainchild here.
Right, thanks Principal McDavid. So hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Kelly Sia. I'm a parent, um, of three children at the Glover School. And, uh, I feel very fortunate to be part of this community. I mean, you've heard a little bit about this, but, you know, we have really outstanding principals who are just really great leaders, especially in times like this where we're facing unprecedented scenarios and situations with our students. Um, teachers are outstanding and the staff is really tremendous as well. So personally, I feel that my kids are super safe, treated fairly. And the concept of the Glover kid really resonates with our, my kids and our families. So I will walk you through some of our glows from a family perspective. Um, so big picture, what you're seeing here is an overwhelming number of parents and families who are really happy at Glover. There are really strong results across the board. You can see in the blue, um, a number of these are academic focused. So families feel that this is a great place for their children to learn. You're going to see high marks for safety, fairness and respect in pink. And then also an overwhelming welcoming of families at 99%. So, you know, really outstanding family results across the board here with plenty of opportunities, um, for, for people to be involved. Um, so if you go to the next one, um, this is a sampling of all of the comments that we've received from parents. We've received, you know, a ton, people, parents put a lot of effort into their, their feedbacks. So what you're seeing is just a few of the themes. Um, but there's some powerful perspective and insights in here across both academics and the amazing teachers and commitment to learning and academics. Um, there was a resounding number of comments, you can see in pink around the Glover kid. It really came through and I'd say 50% of the comments from parents. And then, uh, in yellow, the diversity and inclusion perspective. And I'll just read one of these. Um, the one in the, 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 the bubble that really resonated with me is the, the big yellow bubble in the middle there. Many opportunities for family engagement. I want to add that I love the Black, the Black History Door Initiative this year. And my child is coming home speaking about people of color from the area where they live who have done amazing things and they're so excited for their parents to come in and see the classroom door. And, you know, I personally can speak from a family of, you know, mixed races and backgrounds. Um, we know that, you know, diversity is really valued at Glover and our families feel extremely welcome. So I think this is a really good representation for how people and families at Glover, Glover are feeling.
Thank you, Kelly.
Right. So teachers and staff, so what you're going to see here are a resounding 100% across the board. If you look at, you know, uh, partnering with families, uh, students and faculty feel safe. I mean, there was a resounding, um, feedback from teachers and staff. Again, you're going to see a really strong mixture of the, of the blue academic, the pink where, um, we, we really have social emotional learning and people feel well-recognized. Administrators feel good about the commitments and people feel, uh, fairly treated. And, you know, on the, on, on the yellow as well, that new ideas are supported. You know, there's a good partnership with families across, uh, families and teachers. If you go to the next one. So also to see pretty good representation, um, uh, you'll see, you know, the strong community feel, how excited, you know, children are walking across the door, uh, prioritization of, you know, kindness and respect. Um, and, you know, grade level, really, grade level teachers really partnering across, um, uh, across the programs and, and grades to really ensure that every, uh, every student is, um, you know, the, the priority is there for learning and academics. Um, uh, it, it's incredible the amount, um, that teachers put in to the school and it, and it comes out, um, for the benefit of all the children as well. So across the students, um, also really strong, do you want to pick this up, Sarah?
Yeah, I can. This is Sarah Hammond, uh, teacher over at Glover in third grade. Um, one of the things, uh, you know, one of the things that stood out to me and, and perhaps it's my perspective as a teacher, um, was the fact that students, the overarching theme was that they feel safe. Um, and aside from the, the one student that wanted more tacos, uh, 99% of, of kids could identify, um, a trusted adult. And I think for me, as a teacher, um, that is the safety and having them feel like they are supported and, and that they can speak to somebody when they need them. That sort of is the bedrock of where the rest of the work then goes. Uh, and for me, and I, I, I don't think I speak alone, but if they don't feel safe and they don't feel supported, you know, it, it's nearly impossible to engage them in, in any of the other work that needs to be done. So I think for me, looking at this slide, uh, it was, it was pretty amazing to see those numbers. And knowing that when my students took those tests, you know, they, they weren't just typing in answers. They were being really thoughtful and I know that's a small sample, but they were being very thoughtful about what really did they feel, um, and really crafting their responses. So I think, I, I think that was pretty powerful. Um, and then on the next slide, I mean, all of these are, make me emotional, especially even right now. Um, thinking about all these kids and, and, and how they really feel about the community that we've, that, you know, Karen and Sarah have created, but that all of this, the teachers helped to, um, to make possible. So the one that really stood out was this one over in the yellow, um, where it says, "Allowing kids to be the kids they deserve and want to be." Uh, and I think for me that stood out because, you know, in this day and age, uh, we have so many things that these kids need to learn, so many responsibilities. Um, and the fact that, you know, not just this one kid, but I do really feel that these kids, um, they feel like they can be who they want to be, they, and what they deserve to be as kids because they're only kids once. Um, and so for me, that was really powerful, that they feel safe, they feel supported, they know who to go to in a time of need. Um, and yet on the flip side, they can still be kids. Um, so it was, uh, I'm always proud to be a teacher at Glover, but going through all of these comments, um, and seeing how the students really feel, uh, was, was pretty great, so.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
I'm going back because I missed, we missed Mary McCarthy's voice and we cannot miss Mary McCarthy's voice because she is not a voice we can miss. Mary McCarthy, did you have something you wanted to add on the Glover teacher and staff member part?
Um, I do. I teach first grade at Glover and I can say that I am that yellow bubble. I am that person that loves to walk over that bridge every morning and, and really missing walking over that bridge these days. Um, I've been at Glover for 18 years and I can tell you that over the past four years that I have watched Glover transform into a community that displays kindness and respect every moment of every day. This transformation is a result of the leadership of Karen McDavid, our principal. Karen McDavid leads by example, practices what she teaches us and inspires us as educators and people to be every day. She is present, engaged and supportive for every single staff member that walks over that bridge and through that door every day. Karen's leadership has allowed us to build a rock-solid foundation. With this foundation now in place, the Glover community, more than ever, will continue to work together, thrive and accomplish current and future goals for the children and families that we are privileged and honored to work with every day. So tonight I have to publicly speak for all of the teachers at Glover School and say Karen McDavid, thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, Mary. We should just end it there, Mary. So these are just, uh, these are words of some, some of our little ones. Just to sort of echo everything that, that Mary has said. And just to wrap us up, um, these are just, and you can read them on your own. This is, this is really where we're going. Um, this is what we're going to continue to do based on our, our data that we have. Uh, we're going to continue to deliver outstanding education for every single kid. Every kid is going to continue to be a Glover kid and every kid and every family is going to feel welcome and included at Glover School. Um, this is the big old list of all the things that we want to do. These are our top four for each of those goal areas, um, that we, based on our data, we really want to focus our efforts on for the next three years. And again, this is just sort of to, to wrap it up and, and, and let you know that this is where we're headed. Uh, we haven't firmed up our, our language around our goals yet because they don't start until September. Um, but we've got some time to work on that. Um, and I just wanted to end it, uh, with a little, little sign of hope. Um, so this is Nico and Nico's at home, but Nico's making sure that our doctors and nurses are, are, are know our, know we appreciate them. And, and these are our friends participating in some really fun, uh, challenges from home. But what I really wanted to show you is that the flowers are blooming in the outdoor classroom. And Margaret Eberhard, this is your outdoor classroom. And the flowers are blooming and they're waiting for us. And Glover is a beautiful place and it will continue to be a beautiful place. And, um, our flowers are waiting for us and we can't wait to get back to them. I don't know if this will work or not.
Kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade. Those are all the grades that we need for Glover. Yeah. Faithful, respectful and kind. Those are the words that we need to be in Glover. Anywhere else to be sure. Hey, do, 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 Glover, Glover.
So we wanted to share that with you because that's who we are, uh, whether we're near or we're far. That is who we are. And, um, we share it with you to hopefully make you smile, to hopefully bring some joy and some light into your life. Those are two little ones who got ahold of their mother's cellphone. Uh, I wanted, and thought they were creative, uh, but, but it made our days. So we hope it makes your day and, uh, we can't wait to get back to our kids and our flowers. And, and, um, we're really proud of, of, of what we've done. So thanks for letting us share that with you and I hope, I hope we made you smile.
You did.
You did.
Wow, wow, wow. All right, well, I am going to go around, uh, Member White.
Um, that was a unbelievably wonderful presentation. And, um, I can't believe that the three surveys by all the stakeholders. I've never seen, uh, percentages that high ever in all the years that I've been looking at surveys. And the initiatives by the Diversity Committee, I thought were really excellent. It feels like no one's, no one's sitting on their laurels and saying, we're great. You're keep looking to improve things. And, um, I, I agree that the leadership at this school is just so wonderful. And like, I live in a Glover neighborhood and when I'm out walking in the neighborhood, people are talking about, um, Karen's morning messages and just thinking about how complicated things are right now. And thinking about that you're such a large school, that you're reaching out to so many families and so many children is really amazing. And I, I salute you all, your staff, your parents, your children and the administrative staff, just terrific.
Member Rosemary.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you, Karen and the whole Glover team for a wonderful presentation of all you're doing. And, and it's so moving and poignant since you all can't be together. But I know you're together in spirit and we are totally behind you and, and so proud of all you're doing there. It's really, really beautiful. So thank you, thank you for sharing. Um, you know, I, my kids went to Glover, uh, for like their second half of their elementary education years and, uh, have very warm feelings about, uh, being there. And, um, you've come a long way. It's just wonderful to see and, and I'm particularly inspired by the Diversity Committee work that Nicole talked about. And, and, um, it's, it's just a wonderful thing for everyone to feel included and welcome. And, um, you're just doing wonderful. So, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ada.
Dr. Donahue.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, so the, the morning messages are, are wonderful, um, and they help, they help us kick off our day here as we, um, we structure homeschooling. Um, and, you know, you're focused on being a Glover kid. That then also is, has been very helpful as well, uh, reminding, reminding us in the Donahue household what being a Glover kid means and, and how, um, how that helps get us through, um, these times. Uh, as you, as you look to your upcoming goals and you start to firm them up, um, I hope that you are, uh, aggressive in talking with Central about getting the resources that, that you need in Glover, um, and, you know, at the elementary level in general. Because I, I think there's a lot that we can learn from the success that you've had at Glover. And, um, I'm, I'm phenomenally proud of, of all the success that you and your, your team have had there, uh, Principal McDavid.
Thank you, Dr. Donahue.
Uh, Member Eberhard.
Um, I don't really know, I couldn't even say anything. That was so beautiful. Um, just seeing all the kids and, um, seeing all of you and listening to how much you love your work at Glover. Um, the thing that, the few things that stuck out for me is that you have evolved and changed so much as a community, but you've held on to some of the things that were a part of the community for such a long time. Um, you know, thinking about the lantern walk and the outdoor classroom and of course the ducks and, and particularly the parent involvement, which was always a, a big piece of the school community. And to see it grow and evolve and especially the diversity piece, it's just truly amazing. And, um, I'm just so proud to be part of Milton and so grateful for all your work. And so, thank you. And, um, I'm just a little worried about the duck. I think about it a lot when I go past the pond every day, but I looked up the dates and it's not till late May. So I'm hopeful, okay? I'm just saying.
We had, you know, Margaret, I think you and I, uh, share a brain because, uh, we had, we had, um, I had one of those skip hop things and it says, you know, it shows up and it says, uh, what happened four years ago today? up, and it says, uh, what happened four years ago today. Uh, four years ago, two days ago, we found our first nest of eggs, four years ago. Um, so of course, I freaked out. And, uh, so yes, uh, actually, no, today, this morning, um, the teachers had the opportunity to go into the building at staggered intervals, just practicing great social distancing and all of that. Um, and of course, our, our steward of the outdoor classroom, Mary O'Leary, and, uh, Madame Brown, uh, did a full duck hunt. There are no ducks or eggs yet, so we're in the clear for now. Uh, but we will keep watching because, uh, we, we'll figure out a way to make that happen, whatever, whatever it takes.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Craighead.
I miss Glover. And I, I, I miss it even more now after seeing the presentation. Um, my daughter's doing really well at peers, but, um, I still have that little twinge that I had in September and October of, this is very different going to middle school, you know, having her at the middle school rather than at Glover. And I just drove by the school today, and the parking lot was empty, and it made me sad. But this made me really happy to see, you know, the ways in which you all are coming together, the great goals you have, the great success you've had over the last four years. It's just, you've made such a huge difference in, in that community, Karen, you and your leadership team. And I just want to echo everything that Mary McCarthy said, because it's so, so true. Um, I, I miss the student leadership team and the duck feet and the, the whole thing. Um, but anyway, and, and I'm also hoping to, to just get specific about one thing, the, all the diversity efforts that you have are just amazing to hear Nicole go through, um, that list of things. I'm just found myself hoping that you're able to do them in some form or other before the end of the, you know, before the school year ends, um, even if it has to be remotely, um, because they just sound great, just great. So thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Craighead.
Um, so of course, you know, um, I'm glad, I'm glad Margaret brought up the ducks, because even though I'm a Calico mom, I was thinking about the ducks too. So I'm glad that we got that update. And to Dr. Craighead, I think that even though it's a pre-K-12 community, and we love all our schools, you will always have affinity for your elementary school. Like you just, I, I'm a Calico mom, and there are times when I go in for meetings for, 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 uh, school committee, and you just have to take a little sigh because you're gonna always miss those, those elementary foundational years for your kids. It's, um, there's something special about it. So, um, and of course, I also too really wanna, uh, I have a little something I want to read, but, um, I also too want to, the whole presentation was phenomenal. Um, and, uh, Principal McDavid, you know, I was on the final, you know, uh, reviewing committee when you came in for the job, and I knew that you were going to be the fit that, that school needed. And, um, I'm so lucky that I was right, and glad I was right, because you've been a rock star since day one, and, um, your leadership, um, team continues to prosper, um, uh, with you as their, their overall mentor. So I just want to say that upfront about Glover. Um, I also just want to, I, 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 I hope that my school committee members don't mind this, but I, I read this little, uh, statement that I put together last week, and it was just really us, you know, our first, um, our first virtual meeting after our social distancing and clo, you know, official closing of the schools. But it's pertinent to the whole community, but, you know, really pertinent to you guys at Glover tonight, and since so many parents are on the line as well. Um, I hope that my colleagues and the superintendents will indulge me, because I think I just want to echo this again, since we do have so many of the teachers and parents, um, on the line. So on behalf of the, the Milton School Committee, we want to thank all of you who are working so hard to keep our district afloat and moving forward during these unprecedented times. Uh, we thanks to all the employees at Glover, uh, the facilities, custodians, the food service people, all the support staff, all of the teachers, all of the curriculum coordinators, the guidance and adjustment counselors, uh, educational directors, the assistant principals, and of course, Principal McDavid. And, um, again, I'm going to reiterate, Dr. Spalding, Dr. Pavelcheck, and of course, our big leader here, Superintendent Gormley. Uh, we at the school committee feel you've all gone above and beyond to steer this ship. Um, our committee and our entire town of Milton should commend you, all of you, for your dedication, your compassion, and community leadership, which we need now more than ever. Uh, to all the parents and the guardians that are on this call, um, I said last weekend, I'm going to reiterate that, uh, as parents, we're all scared. And I wouldn't be honest with you if I didn't say that I spent a lot of my time worrying about how this crisis has disrupted, um, our children's emotional lives and academic growth. You know, I worry that, you know, it might set them back. But I also know that I'm only one of many parents and, and guardians and caregivers, um, in this town of Milton who are feeling the same way. Um, and we have this shared feeling, and although it's alarming, uh, it is the reality that's in front of us. And because of that, I'm thankful to the Milton Public Schools who are putting the safety and healthy, and the health, rather, um, of the students first. Uh, I'm grateful to the entire school community, uh, since I know that we, the school committee, know that you're doing what, what you're doing with our kids' best educational interests in mind, and that we will get through this, um, and will be a better school district because of it. Um, as a school community, uh, we're asking all of the parents and guardians, those that are on this call, and maybe if you can cascade it, um, in the social distancing walks or FaceTiming, um, that we're asking for your continued support and partnership as we move through these uncharted waters. Uh, we as a district, we will lead with love and compassion for our community. It's one that we are, more than ever, very proud to be a part of. So thank you all, and thank you for a great presentation.
Well said, Sheila.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Sheila.
Um, uh, uh, assistant, assistant superintendent, so our Superintendent Gormley, any final words?
Uh, it is extraordinary, uh, what Mary McCarthy said, that, um, the principal in the research really leads a building. And a principal becomes a building, and the building becomes the principal and the children and the teachers. And so on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, Karen McDavid, I want to thank you. Uh, Sarah McNeil, you and, uh, Karen have made an unbelievable team district-wide. You have set a standard. Um, every, I smile at the Glover teachers who are here today. Every one of you have a story. Uh, your, Karen refers to you all the time. We know your accomplishments and all those of your peers. And what you do for Milton's children, Glover children, um, is really extraordinary. Anyone who watched this who did not know the Glover community, uh, we can assure them, um, that this was a truthful, honest, and very clear depiction. And, uh, the Glover parents, uh, I taught at the Glover for 14 years, and so, uh, uh, I think all six schools are like my children, but, uh, Glover parents, uh, as demonstrated by those parents that are here tonight, and those that were on the school committee are committed to their elementary schools. And everyone works together on behalf of every single child. We probably know the names of every single child at the Glover. So to the parents and the teachers, you have an unbelievable, um, advocate, and those parents should know they have an unbelievable advocate in Principal McDavid. And so to you, Karen, to the teachers, to the parents, uh, uh, our heartfelt, uh, thanks for the work you do. And I would give a little, um, if I might add one more thing. When we're working through, um, this remote learning, uh, Principal McDavid took the lead with Sarah McNeil on behalf of, um, all the administrators and all the teachers. And, uh, in Shilla Verella's language, they're cascading out tomorrow and the next day to involve all of the elementary teachers. But, uh, Karen and Sarah have spent, uh, 24/7, uh, making sure day one that Milton Public School Elementary children, uh, could go to a site, uh, their work, uh, was real, their work was what they would have seen in school the next day, and no one skipped a beat. And, uh, I just, uh, cannot begin to thank you professionally and personally enough for the work that you have done. And now, um, bringing, once these teachers have, uh, again, we've asked them to do what, um, they've never done before, now bringing them into the planning. But the work that you did day one, uh, to get the Milton Elementary Schools up and running was phenomenal. So thank you. A, a presentation. Teachers, parents, and on behalf of the students and parents.
Virtual round of applause. It's all of parents who called in. Thank you so much. Virtual round of applause. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity. We appreciate it very much, and thank you for your unbelievable leadership.
Your work, and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Site Council, Glover Site Council. You guys are amazing.
Stay safe.
Thank you. Be safe, be well.
Be well, everyone.
We're out of here. Bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. You are welcome to stay if you want.
You want to listen to the finance update or something fun like that. Okay, uh, happening, Superintendent Gormley, it's next.
So I referred last Thursday night that we had research, we had received a directive, uh, from the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Riley. And so, uh, Dr. Spalding took the lead, working with, uh, principals and curriculum leaders, uh, equal to the work that all of our administrators and teachers are doing. And, uh, yesterday, I sent, late to you today, I'm sorry, I didn't get it CC'd to you last night, um, we sent the commissioner's, uh, directive to teachers. We sent the commissioner's letter that he sent out to all the parents and guardians of children, students in Massachusetts. And we sent Milton Public Schools, um, plan, learning plan, and we sent, um, uh, what we also sent, uh, to our teachers. And so we have sent those materials out, and, uh, every one of our teachers and our administrators, our paraprofessionals are engaged in this work. So as we, uh, uh, go through, uh, the coming school committee meetings, we'll give you updates on that work. Uh, but those were sent to you earlier this evening for you to take a look at. Um, I would just, uh, reiterate at the beginning, um, the priority of the Milton Public Schools is and will always be the health and safety of its students, families, and staff members. Further, we recognize that the global health crisis is affecting every aspect of life for every member of the Milton School community. Um, this learning plan, again, sent out to teach all teachers and staff, is crafted with the realization that its implementation by educators and families at home is highly dependent on our own current state of health and that of our families, and the new reality within each of us is living. We remain committed to supporting every student, family, and staff member as we navigate this new reality and the implications it has for learning. So I want to recognize Dr. Spalding, our principals, our, uh, curriculum leaders, and we'll be, uh, talking to you more about this as we move along. Uh, tomorrow in my blog, uh, we're going to have resources for parents. But another friend of the Milton Public Schools, Laurie Stillman, wanted me to repeat tonight, and it will be in my blog tomorrow, the Interface Referral Service, an important mental health resource for Milton families. Um, we'll have the link in tomorrow's, uh, blog, and, um, also on the front of our website. And so, under, uh, the stress and the pressure, uh, that families and residents are feeling, um, this shared resource funded by, uh, the Milton Police Department, the Health Department, BID Milton, uh, Mike's 5K, and the Milton Public Schools, and Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Organization is a resource that I would encourage families, um, to use. Uh, I will repeat that our office, our superintendent's office, um, with, uh, Dr. Glenn Pavelcheck, Dr. Karen Spalding, um, I have to recognize Laurie Dunn and Charlene Roach for their heroic efforts. Um, we're open every day. And so no question, it's too small, um, nor request, um, too large. You should avail yourself. Our principals are answering emails as our teachers, uh, 24/7. Um, on our website, we're changing the questions and answers hourly. Um, I've asked Dr. Pavelcheck to, uh, again, when you read, um, about this crisis and school closures, uh, the, uh, food and nourishment of our children who rely on our schools or food is highlighted across this country. Uh, today's a monumental day in the Milton Public Schools. Dr. Pavelcheck?
So, um, we've begun a process of distributing food on Wednesdays. So any family that comes up for each child, they get a package with five, uh, breakfasts and five lunches to carry them through the week. Um, today, we handed out 186 packages, so 1,860 meals, um, to the Milton community. So between this morning and, uh, this afternoon, Jackie Morgan and her staff are out there in the morning, and they get in the afternoon. It's been a, a great success, and the numbers are growing every time we go out there.
Um, briefly, those individuals who are, um, out on the line, and last week, um, I think I told you I saw them in the snow one afternoon, Neely O'Fregga, uh, Samjet Bodha, uh, Kim Golden, Jane Fitzgerald, Marika Varan, Zanita Harville, and Kim DiMarni, DiMarnino, along with, uh, Jackie Morgan, every single day, are preparing, um, those breakfasts and lunch and distributing them. Also, uh, under the leadership of A.J. Melanson, every Wednesday, we have a very elaborate system with social distancing outside. Um, uh, parents and guardians are encouraged to email A.J. Melanson if they have an issue with their child's Chromebook, or if you're a Milton Public School student, uh, and you need a Chromebook. We have a very elaborate system every Wednesday morning doing that. I want to recognize, um, Milton's Health Director, Caroline Cincella. Her support, uh, to the Milton Public Schools, uh, 4,500 children and 600 employees, uh, she is on speed dial, uh, with us, and, uh, she has made herself, um, an unbelievable, uh, resource to all of us. We'll send a blog out tomorrow that we believe will, um, answer even more questions and give more information to parents and guardians. Um, we're beginning to get calls about refunds. And, uh, we go on conference calls with the Department of Education every other day, two and three-hour, um, conference calls directly with the commissioner or the head of special education. And, um, within the next week, when there are further decisions made about how long the schools will be closed, or when they will be reopened in the positive, we'll talk about, um, the refunds. But we have every intention to talk to Finance Subcommittee in the School Committee, and, um, on everything from buses, uh, to tuition for preschool, work with, um, the School Committee on framing those, uh, refunds. And, um, very briefly, this afternoon, I received an email from Tina Green, who is an engineering and physics teacher at Milton High School. And if you would indulge me, um, from her church, uh, Pastor Shelley Davis at East Congregational Church, she wanted me to share, um, they've done it in London and New York City, and now this Friday, we will do it in greater Boston. A collective round of applause for workers who are in the front lines of the battle. Everyone from Milton to Mount Washington, from Beacon Hill to the Berkshires, can cut, participate, and clap because we care. Here's how. At 7:00 PM on Friday, open a window or stand in front of your house, and clap and whoop, ring a bell, or bang some pots and pans for five minutes, as if J.D. Martinez just hit a homerun in Fenway Park. Organizers are hoping residents will cheer for the doctors, the nurses, the first responders, the pharmacists, the grocery workers, the delivery drivers and the postal employees, the restaurateurs who have stayed open, and other essential personnel who are risking exposure to COVID-19, so that everyone else can stay home and stay healthy. This plan is to, uh, keep up every Friday at 7 o'clock PM until we emerge on the other side of this pandemic. So we'll put that out in our blast tomorrow, uh, with more questions and answers. And, um, on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, our children who are, um, being taught at home, uh, through remote learning, our teachers, paraprofessionals, our staff, um, our parents, the guardians of our students, um, in this school committee, in this community, um, who has, uh, shown, uh, the essence of why people choose to live here. I want to thank you. And, uh, that very optimistic presentation tonight, and those flowers at the end show you that, um, as I wrote in my email, uh, this will end, and, uh, the flowers will bloom.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Superintendent, so much. Next, under the chair's report, I just have two quick things. And before I, I reference A, which is our revised school committee calendar that I want to speak to, I do too just want to give a huge shout out. I mean, she's a superstar in, in, in regular days, but a huge shout out to Charlene Roach who, you know, assisting us with these virtual meetings and prepping us and getting the material out and setting up the, the virtual meetings, which I know is all new to her in a very intense and fast time. She's become like a master of it. And I just want to, my heartfelt thank you to her for supporting us, supporting the superintendents in getting these meetings together so that we can keep moving the district, district forward, you know, again, in these uncertain times so that we can speak to what we need to speak to, vote on what we need to vote to, so that, you know, we don't get behind, so that, you know, if we open again and that when the flowers are blooming, we're going to be ready to address what we need to address. But she has been, you know, beyond a rock star with regards to this. So, I just want to thank her publicly for that. Next, I am going to speak to our calendar for the rest of the year. So, Charlene sent an attachment of our revised school committee calendar. And as you'll see, we are going to change, wait a minute, do I have, yeah, I have the most common here. So, tonight is April 1st. We've had the Glover Site Council. We were scheduled for the 15th, but we don't really think we'll have anything. So, we're going to cancel that for now. If anything urgent arises, we can, you know, post and give a shout out to see who will be available. But right now, we're going to cancel April 15th. Our next meeting will be on April 29th, which was originally scheduled, and the Pierce Middle School Site Council will be there. And next, we, we have May 6th, which will have the, a school choice hearing. And we'll also have the Milton High School Site Council present at that as well. We should have school choice to vote for Desi. And I, I know this is uncharted waters, but we might have a transportation contract to vote for, for next year. That's to be determined, but that's what's there. We then will meet on May 27th and speak to the superintendent, superintendent's evaluation. June 3rd, we have technically on there right now, June 9th is our town elections, our rescheduled town elections. And June 10th, we would have a reorg meeting, which is the day after, and then a school committee meeting after that. So, technically, that's where we're at. If we need to revise or change as we go along, we'll keep you abreast. And technically, now, just as a reminder, town meeting is set for June 15th. Again, to be determined of exactly how that's going to happen and if it will. But again, to be, we'll keep everyone abreast of that. Secondly, number B, we just formally going to announce that we're going to cancel the open budget hearing scheduled for, for tonight because, again, things are still fluid with that. So, that is postponed as well. Anyone any questions, statements on any of that? Okay.
Just, we're going to need to reschedule that open budget meeting for some point.
Yeah, we will. We will. Yeah. I just think that we didn't, we don't know exactly what, which, which of them we'll put it into, but it will be rescheduled. Yes. Um, next is approval of minutes. Maureen Kennedy has done and it was included in our attachments, the minutes of our March 26th meeting of last Wednesday, 2020. So, I'd like to make a motion for approval of them. Second, anybody have any edits, changes, concerns?
No, I would just like to say this is the fastest turnaround of minutes for a full-on school committee meeting that I've ever seen. And we're wonderful and so detailed. So, thank you, Maureen.
Okay, then roll call vote on the minutes. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Miss, Member Ebbehart?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Great. Old Business, I don't think we have any. Citizens Speak, Topic Response, none. Next media agenda items, I went through that on the calendar. If there's anything that, as always, that you, in the next meetings that you guys, under the given circumstances, want to speak to or address, you know, please let myself and Superintendent Gormley know and we can address it and put it on the meetings, especially since our meetings are going to be shorter. Let me just see. Yep.
May I remember, may I?
Yeah, yeah.
I was remiss and Dr. Spalding reminded me, our elementary principals are working with the teachers on maybe a little surprise next Thursday afternoon, but we'll, they're working with the Milton Police and, but we'll get facts out to the community. So, next Thursday afternoon, I would be remiss and Holly Kincaid would make us all come back here if I didn't mention it on school committee. But there will be facts and details going out. So, for.
Okay, via your email and your blog or shout out, et cetera, et cetera?
We'll do a mobile call and everything.
Okay, great.
Surprise.
All right. Any last comments, statements at all for tonight's meeting by anyone? Superintendent Gormley?
One other thing. The work goes on. And tomorrow, Lori Dunn and Dr. Glenn Pavelcheck with a PTO president as a witness. Glenn, do you want to give the update of what the English-French immersion's looking like? First grade?
We'll be doing the French immersion lottery tomorrow morning. The two schools have more students requesting French than we had seats for them. Other two schools have seats available. Last year, I believe we started with something like 27 or 28 students on a waiting list. I think this year it's 10. So, it's a much better shape going into this year. So, we'll be handling all that tomorrow. And getting, getting letters out to parents this week.
That really speaks to, the work goes on and the parents went to the meetings, made their choices. And then we, in this interim, we stopped kindergarten registration, but we reopened it today. It won't be done face to face, but it will be done electronically. And so, we'll be able to give you those important kindergarten numbers. But as Dr. Pavelcheck said, again, we're going to have to encourage everyone to register and make contact with us. And another very interesting phenomenon that Dr. Spalding lobbied for today, in these unprecedented times, there are people moving into town. So, they don't live in the community they have moved out of and they have, children have to be educated. And so, just think, these children now have moved into homes here. And Dr. Spalding said to me, but if they're in ninth grade, who's going to make this, how is this schedule? And sitting down with them, but we're going to register those children, students, and they're going to participate in all of the remote learning opportunities that are great appropriate for them. So, the schools are closed. You heard reference today, I really reluctantly, but it was important with the remote learning that the teachers and staff, we had really cleaned these, did our cleaning. They came back, they came on a staggered shift. We had a procedure. They went in, they went out, they had gloves. The buildings are being cleaned back down. But it was a very, very poignant seeing them take all of their belongings out of these schools today. So, they wanted and needed the materials that they couldn't access electronically. So, the buildings are closed. If we hear a noise, we're startled and we look around. So, people are practicing the social distancing and people are staying home. And we, we are, on behalf of the children, we're indebted. But the work goes on and families are moving in. And French and English assignments will be done and kindergarten numbers will be done and assignments will be done.
So, Superintendent Gormley, so we, maybe we'll, since we don't have another meeting till the 29th, you'll have a, a better understanding and update on like numbers for, for K and for that by then, yes?
And by then, we would have sent out the first round, see who volunteers, be able to make their choices. So, it will, by the 29th, we'll have a very good picture.
Okay. Well, okay, I'm going to make a motion then for our second virtual school committee meeting to come to an end. Can, I have a second. Dr. Craighead? Okay, roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Member Ebbehart?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Varela? Yes. And thank you, guys. Stay safe, be well, keep on keeping on. Have to be strong. And guys in Central, like, we love you. Thank you for everything. Bye darling. Talk to you later. Be well. Be well, everyone.
Bye.
Take care, all.
Bye, Kevin. Bye, you too.
Bye.